Good morning, and welcome to the July 7th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Would you like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Rule call, please. Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier. President Groom. Present. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment for items that are not on the consent calendar or on this meeting agenda. And Mr. Fox, Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malteby, and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Thank you also for voting to provide assisted outpatient treatment to persons living with serious mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek it voluntarily on June 16th. I respectfully request that the Laura's Law Pilot Project you approved be implemented on a rolling basis as soon as possible for several reasons that indicate there is an extraordinary need to provide assisted outpatient treatment under Laura's Law in the county right now. First, Ellen Wright McKay, a 66-year-old woman who was residing in the North Claremont Street apartment in San Mateo for at least the last 18 years, was beaten to death on Saturday under circumstances which suggests Laura's Law may have prevented it. The 40-year-old woman who lived next door to her for about five years and was arrested reportedly had a history of hospitalizations in the San Mateo Medical Center psychiatric ward and began experiencing a deteriorating mood change starting six months ago and apparently lacked the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily. Second, since June 16th, I have reason to believe the health system has received more than a half a dozen inquiries from county residents seeking information about how and when Laura's Law will be implemented because I referred the inquiries I received to them. Our sheriff does not need another murder suspect in custody and our district attorney does not need another homicide to investigate especially involving a suspect with serious mental illness. And last but not least, the county taxpayers do not need to pay for another person living with serious mental illness being treated while incarcerated when it would have cost much less to provide assisted outpatient treatment. As I believe these facts reflect, there is an extraordinary need for the assisted outpatient treatment Laura's Law can provide in San Mateo County and therefore I respectfully request that Laura's Law Pilot Project that you approved on June 16th be implemented on a rolling basis as soon as possible. Thank you.
Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, county supervisors and staff. I'd like to thank Reverend Nibby of Pacifica of the Holy Cross Lutheran Church for coordinating the celebration of our independence. He really knows how to reel in all those red-blooded Americans that have faith. That's one thing I do have is my faith and what keeps me going. How about you? Do you have a conscience that directs you into helping your constituents get a slice of justice? Don Horsley was present there along with his aide Chris Hunter, former supervisor, former Superior Court Judge Quentin Cobb, along with Catherine Jimm Lung, a Stanford University professor who wrote Damnation and How Faith Plays A Part Within The Justice System Itself. So how come after months of pleading for some of the justice, I feel like I'm still talking to deaf ears, along with Marty Fox who has a longer track record than I do? So don't pretend to be a red-blooded American unless you practice what you preach. To you, Mr. Slocum, and to you, Mr. Malteby, both veterans like I are familiar with my case. Can you help and help a fellow veteran? Regarding my disability claim that sat in the dead letter file for five years, I just wanted you to know that Jeffrey Young's file and mine are so much different. So please be careful how you spend my taxpayers' money by hiring deadbeat veterans that are supposed to be advocates for veterans themselves. Thank you.
Michael Stogner.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Michael Stogner from San Carlos and for the last 15 years I've acted as a private victims advocate in San Mateo County. And I'm here today mostly because I think you might not be aware of something, and that is we recently had a conviction reversed on June 26th in our courtroom. And I happened to be in that courtroom because I thought I was going to a sentencing hearing. And it was a sentencing hearing of a former San Mateo County Sheriff Deputy. And as it turned out, I'm here to make San Mateo County safer. I'm here to make sure that we make restraining orders important in San Mateo County, no matter who the restraining order is against. And I'm also here because since this new trial supposedly, there's actually a possibility that there will not be a new trial. And the reason for this new trial was prosecutorial misconduct, which is a subject I've been interested in for a long time. And we had our seven newspapers that reported, two newspapers out of seven reported the story. Not one of them mentioned prosecutorial misconduct. What they mentioned was that the victim lied under oath according to one of our judges. And I was absolutely stunned that a judge would make such a statement. We have people lying under oath in our courtrooms every single day in San Mateo County. That is no big deal. And that is not the reason this case got reversed. It got reversed because of the behavior of our prosecutors withholding what the judge considered critical information. Now what's more shocking is that our district attorney Steve Wagstow has not decided to redo this case. I sent him an email immediately and I hope you will too, even if just as citizens, please just retry this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner. Monica Berlin.
Hi, my name is Monica Berlin, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. And I was here to speak about the accountability of CPS. And I had met with the Director of CPS, Locke Nguyen, last week about my son. And he finally admitted, well, he didn't admit, but we met with three other people that were in the room, and they admitted that, you know, my son was abused or is being abused. And the problem I'm having is that now Mr. Nguyen says that San Mateo County does not have jurisdiction over my son to do anything to correct the mistake that CPS San Mateo County made. And I just, you know, I think that I'm a great leader because I stand up for what's right and I'm persistent in, you know, trying to pursue justice for me and my son. And I just would like somebody to tell me why we're funding an agency that is more interested, it seems like, in the politics of, I'm not really sure actually, but I just, I just don't understand why we're funding an agency that's supposed to protect children and then when there's evidence arises, you know, that a child is being seriously harmed in our community. And I just feel like it's the responsibility of all of the citizens in the community to come together to stand up for what's right and to not let child abuse, you know, slip under the rugs because, you know, that could lead to people having mental health problems when they get older, like the woman who beat her neighbor with the baseball bat. You need to like look at, you know, what happened in people's childhoods and that like has a big impact later on and that could help lower costs overall if we could help the children in our community. And I just want to know if there's somebody I can work with who can help me communicate with the jurisdiction in San Francisco to help my son. And thank you, I would like to know if I could be assigned somebody and maybe you could pass these pictures of my son to the supervisors. Thank you.
Ms. Berlin, we will ask Ms. Faralis and Mr. Byers to look into this and contact you.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
That is the last public comment card we have. So we'd like to go now to set the agenda and approve the consent calendar with item number 13 being continued.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
With 13 being continued.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. So the agenda has been set and the consent calendar has been approved. So we will now go to item number one. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, President Groom, members of the board, Ms. Faralis and Mr. Byers. This item is an annexation of, excuse me, of a property in the Oak Knoll Sewer District, the lands of Egan. The sewer district has the ability to accept service from this property. The applicant has worked with various jurisdictions to pay all permitting fees and the department recommends that the annexation be approved. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Porter? We have no speakers.
And I'll move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll move to authorize the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go to number two.
Thank you, President Groom. Another annexation within the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District. This is the lands of Coco. Once again, the district has the ability to accept the parcel into the district. We have received approvals from downstream agencies and all fees either have been paid or will be paid upon the annexation into the district. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions? Motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll move to authorize the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Now we will go to item number three. Which is a public hearing on the formation of the Los Trancos County Maintenance District.
Thank you, President Groom. Today, the department is recommending that your board, excuse me, conduct a public hearing, which is actually a protest hearing, to form a county maintenance district that would accept the duties that are currently being provided by the Los Trancos, the Los Trancos Vista Verde Communities Maintenance District up there. Anyhow, I'm going to go through a brief presentation on what the community maintenance district will do and be happy to answer any questions with this regard. So Los Trancos County Water District was a water distribution provider. They provided potable water up until 2006 when California Water Service acquired them. The district didn't dissolve at that time. They continued to receive a portion of property tax that was pre-proposition 13 that was then used to provide specific services to the community. And what the intent of the county maintenance district will be is to continue provision of three of the major services up there through the county of San Mateo. The annual revenues from that district is approximately $246,000. There will be about $200,000 available, and these are in current dollars, for the services that will be provided to the community. And we, as obviously recommend, that the community maintenance district be formed. This is a map showing the boundaries of the district. It's, as you can see, it's a small district in a very wooded area. It's a little tough to get a reference up there, but it's in the South County, up near Skyline Boulevard in that area. So in terms of forming the district, there's a section in the Streets and Highway Code that allows it. The district can be formed absent a majority protest. However, and the way that a protest works, by the way, is it's based on the square footage of the parcel that is voting. So in the event that we do receive a protest, staff can tabulate those protests by area and report back to your board as to what the square footage was and whether a valid protest exists. That being said, your board has an ability to override that protest by a four-fifths vote if you so choose. So in terms of services, what the district will do is really continue three main services. That is the enhanced fire protection services in the area, open space land management, which is really taking care of a lake that's up in that area, and finally drainage system management, and that's overland drainage in the area. So in terms of service providers, the Department of Public Works would be tasked with the drainage system management portion of that, of the new maintenance district. And will also oversee district administration, which is essentially issuing contracts, preparing the budget, and the administrative work that we do for all of our special districts that we oversee. Enhanced fire services will be provided by Woodside Fire Protection District. And the idea there is it's in a very heavily wooded area and there is a need to provide access to that area and have a clear space for the fire trucks to be able to access the area. That's what Woodside Fire will do. It's basically tree removal along the sides of roads so that in the event of a fire, they're assured an ability to get up there. And Mid Peninsula Open Space has agreed to provide the land management services, which is basically taking care of the lake up in that area. And as I said, the County Department of Public Works would be administering the contracts with Woodside Fire and Mid Penn. So in terms of logistics, the formation of the maintenance district is contingent upon the dissolution of the water district. LAFCO is scheduled to hear that on July 15th, which is next week. So in the event that LAFCO recommends dissolution, the CMD will be in place as a mechanism or agency for those services to continue to be provided to the community. Your board has already approved the property tax transfer. That was done last month. And we're targeting October 1st for an effective date for the reorganization. I'd like to make one other point. Attached to your agenda is an Exhibit A. That's there for information only. We're still working with the water district's attorney to fine tune some of the details in there, but that essentially outlines what the functions of the district will be. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So, Mr. Porter, you listed kind of three service providers, the county, the Woodside Fire Protection, and Mid Penn Open Space. So the property tax proceeds would be allocated across those three? Is that what would happen?
So the property tax would be allocated into the CMD that's administered by Public Works, and then we would enter into contracts with the other two service providers. So they would, we would, they would provide a service, they would bill us, and we would pay them. So all the finances stay within the department and then we execute essentially service agreements with the other two agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment. We have, this dissolution actually started with Supervisor Gordon and ended up with me. And I've worked on it for the last four and a half years with Martha Peatos, worked with the Board of Directors of the water district that no longer supplies water. And, you know, I think we came to a, finally came to a pretty good conclusion, a pretty good recommendation here before us. Just that, those are my only comments.
Okay, we have a couple of public speakers. Bill Coats.
Good morning, board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm the president of the water district. And unless you have questions, I'm only going to speak very briefly to thank Supervisor Horsley and Martha and Jim Porter and everyone at county who's helped put together what has been a very laborious 15-month task here of trying to figure out how to do this and transform a essentially defunct water district into a community, county maintenance district that can provide services for us and our community. And we're very appreciative of all that help. Unless the board has any questions, we actually did a survey, a professional survey of the residents, and it strongly supported to make this transformation and we thank you for your assistance in helping us to implement this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Coats. Stanley Gage.
Thank you, my name is Stan Gage. I'm vice president of the board of the water district and really I can only second what Bill has said and reinforce that it's been a real pleasure to work with both Martha and Don in writing this final chapter of the water district. I think it's a great thing that we're going to finally move ahead into this new method of managing the services. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Gage. Any other discussion?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, being that this is my district, I'll move to adopt the resolution creating Los Trancos County Maintenance District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. And we'll go to item number four. Thank you.
Good morning, Jean Fraser, Chief of the Health System. This is a simple ordinance that both codifies the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee as well as it reduces the number of members down to six. The reason for doing this is because we've had a great deal of difficulty, I'm sorry, down to five, I apologize, from 11 to five. The reason we are making this change is because we've had a great deal of difficulty getting a quorum with the larger committee, and so it makes sense to us to have this important committee function appropriately and therefore we're recommending this ordinance for your approval.
Thank you. I've been working on this issue for a long time and with the IHSS going to the state, this just makes perfect sense to reduce the board but still have a public board that will be able to discuss issues and help with needy clients. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ms. Fraser. We'll go to number five, which is a resolution approving the use of Measure A Fund for One East Palo Alto Sponsored Employment Program. Ms. Faralis.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board. This is a request for use of district-specific Measure A Funds coming from District Four Supervisor Slocum's district. It is a one-time allocation of $30,000 for One East Palo Alto. This is for their sponsored employment program that provides part-time employment to youth during the summer for six weeks, and we are recommending this request. The Human Services Agency has an existing agreement with this organization and we'll go back and the resolution authorizes our HSA director to amend the agreement for this purpose.
Mr. Slocum? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Go to item number six, which is amendment to the agreement with Seton Medical Center and the County of San Mateo and the San Mateo County Health Commission. Ms. Faralis.
Madam President, there are actually two items for this particular item. One is the amendment to the agreement, this is the final amendment to the Seton Medical Center agreement and San Mateo County Health Commission. This is for the last four months of the fiscal year. If you recall, we had our original agreement with Seton from October 13th, from October 2013 through June of 2014, amended it a couple of times because of the sale to Prime Healthcare, which was not consummated. So this agreement takes Seton to the last four months of the fiscal year and we recommend your approval of this amendment. The other item is for Hip Housing. This is a new Measure A agreement that was approved by your board as part of the allocation plan. This is $300,000 and it is to expand their home sharing program, both for marketing and to attract more homeowners to participate in the program.
Okay. I'll move approval of a resolution for the Seton Medical Center and the Hip Housing Home.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Kate Comfort-Har wants to speak on the Hip Housing issue.
Oh, I'd love to hear from her first.
Good morning. I am Kate Comfort-Har, Executive Director of Hip Housing, which is a nonprofit organization that provides creative affordable housing solutions throughout San Mateo County. And I am here today to thank you for your consideration of our Measure A proposal, which does seek to expand our home sharing program and the impact of that program. Now this couldn't come at a more important time, and this is actually the other reason why I'm here today. We, you know, can't pick up a paper or talk to a service worker without finding out how difficult it is to live here with regard to housing. And now Hip Housing is facing a brand-new and very dramatic challenge. Airbnb has launched a marketing campaign locally to promote what they are calling home sharing, which unlike our program, which seeks to use existing housing stock to create a permanent affordable housing option for people who work and live here in this county, Airbnb seeks to use a rental model where that housing stock is then taken out of inventory for us to use as permanent housing. We lost our first home provider last month to Airbnb and we're anticipating quite a few more, given the nature of their aggressive and well-funded campaign. So, couldn't come at a better time. I want to thank you for understanding the importance of home sharing here in this county. We are one of only 70 programs nationwide, so we're very lucky to have a program like this. And we couldn't compete with a company like Airbnb on our own. So your support to help us with a marketing campaign to recruit more providers to our program instead of theirs is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Okay, thank you. That was very informative as well. I'll move the resolution to amend the agreement with Seton and approve the agreement with the Hip Housing for the home share and a resolution authorizing the appropriation transfer request.
Second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So now we'll go to item number seven, which is to direct the county manager to send a comment letter to San Mateo County Local Agency Formation Commission after the municipal service review of the Harbor District. Ms. Jensen.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Faralis, Mr. Byers. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm deputy county manager and I'm here to present to you a draft letter to the local agency formation commission for your consideration. The civil grand jury in 1913, 2013, 14 investigated the San Mateo County Harbor District and that, their report initiated the service review by the local agency formation commission of the district. They also recommended in the civil grand jury report that the district be dissolved and that the county take over district operations. On May 29th of this year, the local agency formation commission, LAFCO, issued their report. That report included numerous fiscal findings about the district and the county now has an opportunity to comment on that report. The county manager has prepared a draft response letter for your consideration. In that letter, we state that the board supports all the LAFCO recommendations around fiscal improvements or fiscal oversight of the district. The letter also notes that the county will be commenting on the, will not be commenting on the dissolution of the district unless LAFCO formally adopts a dissolution recommendation. And finally, the letter notes that before taking any action related to the Harbor District, the county will need to conduct a comprehensive analysis of the district. That analysis will include review of their operations, it will include review of their finances and their funding sources, and it will also especially include a review of their facilities and the reserves they have for long-term capital maintenance of those facilities. I should also like to note that that report will include input from the city of South San Francisco. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Just one comment. We're actually going to be hearing this at LAFCO next week, so just as you mentioned, LAFCO will probably take whatever action we take and then come back to the board.
All right. Anything else?
Well, just a quick comment that, as you can imagine, I have been following this pretty closely. There's a number of issues with the Harbor District, but the last couple of years they've been bogged down essentially in dysfunction and they have, as a consequence, all their deferred maintenance has simply been, continued to be deferred. So before we make any decision, I think we really need to look at all the potential liability and the assets as well, and essentially what is best for good government and service to the people of San Mateo County. So we will be continuing to look at that very closely, at least for my district and I'm sure other board members as well. And so this is, I think this is an appropriate response.
Anything else? A motion, please, to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Item number eight is the county manager report, which we have. Any further comments, Ms. Faralis or Ms. Jensen? Okay.
No.
Before we adjourn- Before we adjourn, Ms. Dyer, I neglected to ask you to speak on item number 13, even though we continued it. Would you like to speak? Okay, please, thank you.
I think that the money could be better spent by helping the homeless or affordable housing. This process should have been done years ago, not now, when the county is cash-strapped where they can't meet their pension bond obligation. And is our future generation really interested, and for what purpose? And will history really know the truth? I've had documents expunged from the court files and others placed in the files without my knowledge of assets that I never received. Whose campaign did I contribute without my knowledge? I say spend some of the money investigating who received my one-half million dollars. I once discovered an error on some legal papers I received from an attorney, which was the wrong case number. When I did my own investigation, I discovered on Microfish, it was a land transaction between two landowners in the 1800s. My copy is in excellent condition, in case you want a copy of it.
Sorry that I neglected to call you earlier. Board member reports. Supervisor Pine?
None today.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. I would ask that we adjourn in memory today of Rebecca Lopez. Rebecca is, was a sister to Linda Lopez, who, as you know, is the Chair of the North Fair Oaks Community Council. She passed away on June 23rd and was a resident of Mountain View. Rebecca graduated from Sequoia High School, the University of California, Santa Cruz, Brandeis University, where she earned her doctorate in social work. From 1982 to 1992, Rebecca was an aide to the late Congressman Tom Lantos. She left the Bay Area in 1992 to become a professor in the School of Social Work at, well, she taught for 22 years. Rebecca founded El Concilio here in San Mateo County, an organization committed to improving the life of Latinos and affecting policy changes for the Latino communities. And she was a champion of Latino causes throughout her life, and obviously, she'll be missed by her family, and especially her sister, and we extend our condolences to the family.
Supervisor Horsley? Just a quick comment. This 4th of July, myself and Supervisor Pine both went to the Highlands Parade. What was notable, though, was that our fire department, they were out there in full force, and they actually, it had to be pulled off because there was a grass fire. So you have to really be aware of the fact that this county is really dry, and it is, we just, we want to really avoid any kind of wildland fires we see in Southern California or even Vacaville. And so people really have to be really cognizant of how dry and how potentially vulnerable we are in a number of areas.
Supervisor Garcia?
I just have a couple of quick announcements. Once again, Seniors on the Move will be happening this year on November 10th, so please save the date. That's an event that I do along with Congresswoman Spear, who created this many, many years ago. The location has not yet been determined, but we will let you know. Also, there's two upcoming Age Well Drive Smart seminars. The first one is South San Francisco, Tuesday, July 28th, at the Magnolia Senior Center from 9:00 AM to 12:00. That's in South San Francisco. And in Belmont, August 25th, at Twin Pines Center from 9:30 to 12:30.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perkins, representing Congresswoman Spear, it was nice to have you with us today. And with that, we're adjourned.